Please rise for the invitation of Mayor Paul Burglaw, Chairman of the Hall of Valley Regional House.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our Creator and loving Father, on the evening of this special day devoted to exercising our freedom to vote and to making our preferences known, we gather together for the work of the people. Thank you for these civil servants here in this room and throughout the good city of Hickory who give of their time and talents for the betterment of our communities and world. Give them strength and guidance that they may do their work with wisdom, kindness, and justice tonight and each and every day. Bless all who are gathered for this meeting, that a spirit of cooperation and beneficence will prevail for the blessing of all your creation. We ask this and whatever else is needed in your most holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Last, a good old friend, this is a good D. Grant from San Stevie, Nashville here. And I'm going to ask real dear Houston fellows, starting with my old friend, I've been about.
I'm Grant.
In case you didn't get, I'm a little footballer there. Okay, next, who's the guy you're talking to? I got over here.
Ashley Freeman.
Ashley Freeman?
Yes.
Okay.
Madison Freeman. Marge Ward.
Taylor Tom.
And my others. Rachel Ward.
Luke Ferguson.
Kevin Wood.
Jay Zera.
Eric Gray.
Anybody else? You want to rat on somebody that's not standing up? I got to finish if somebody not standing up. Okay, come on. All right, who do you have today? I want to tell you something. I had a pleasure of speaking on local government to the honor of serious classes in San Stevie. Okay, these young people are impressive. And I'm standing out there and I'm giving my best speech and I'm feeling good about things. Morgan, please, raise your hand. How do you go home with that? I'll bet you got some kids coming. Okay, we have a special presentation on hunger and homelessness awareness. And I'm speaking to Tina Willis, Casey McCall, Barbara Rush. And apparently there's four of them in there. We are fierce in here, right? Okay.
Casey wasn't able to come, so we got Austin Pierce with the Soup Kitchen and two of them with Public Christian Ministries.
God bless you all. God bless you. Thanks. Whereas, for the past several years, the National
Gary, you know, he's quite a hungry too.
A photographer there? Oh, come on, Gary. Whereas, for the past several years, the National Coalition for Homeless and National Soup Campaign for Hunger and Homelessness has sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness. And the housing vision to the annual care has been actively working to end hunger and homelessness in the county of Hickory. Whereas, the purpose of this proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing. And to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers as well as community service opportunities for citizens to assist soul service organizations. Whereas, there are many organizations committed to sheltering, providing supportive services, as well as meals and supplies, including Houseland, Department of State of Services United Way, Behavioral Health Care, Community College, Houston County College CCM, Happy to the Songs, Family Care, Family Guidance, Grace House, Greater Hickory CCM, Hickory Police Department, Our Father's Community, Partner Behavioral Health Care, State Auburn, Salvation Army, Side Park at Home, Uniform Veterans Health and Veterans, and many more. Whereas, the Hickory City Council recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem, now therefore being resolved, that the Hickory City Council hereby proclaim Club Number 1624 as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness. And I'd like to present this to these folks. I'm going to get you this. Come up here. I saw a young man taking pictures back there. I see cell phones. This is young, high-tech crowd. Look at that. Oh, it's magic. They all have their cell phones out.
Fire squad.
Is that it? Morgan, I want you to know that this plaque costs $38.00. Thank you all. Appreciate you.
Mayor, if I could just have one second. Dear Hunger and Homelessness Awareness, we do have some events that we want the community to participate in. We love to have everyone's involvement. On Sunday, 17th, we have Sunday Morning Service on Square, and that's with Our Father's Pavilion. And they do Sunday morning service for those who are homeless every Sunday, and everybody at Orlando have breakfast for us and juice and coffee and a little extra things that they don't normally have Sunday mornings, but they, we'd love to have you participate with us on that. Austin is hosting bingo on Tuesday, so this is, again, he holds it as a signature on a pretty regular basis, and it'd be great to come and participate and see what things are important to people. Because you'd be surprised, it's not typical bingo prizes that you get when you go. It's toilet paper and laundry detergent and things like that that people win, and those are the things that they need. On Thursday, we have, November 21st, we've got a dramatic performance called "Rome's Songs" that was actually written by one of the members of our continuum, a peer and as to the CDCC main council in Eastland Auditorium, and that would be followed by a homeless panel discussion. And we'll have those who were formerly homeless and currently homeless that'll be talking about their experiences so you can put a face with homelessness and see some of the reasons why people are homeless. And then on the 23rd, on Saturday, we're going to have a cookout at Grace House, the Day Shelter, and we invite you to participate there and meet a lot of the folks that are in the continuum and talk to us and some of the folks that are experiencing homelessness and find out what resources are available and how people can help. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Also, we're going to have this individual who will be coming for us a little later, but I want to recognize former Mayor Eliot Callan as the last citizen. Would you like to have you all back in Hickory and a little bit ahead of you back here in County Jail? Mayor of Hickory for 20 years, which is a record for service as mayor of Hickory. Come on down, Bill. We're going to let you go now, okay?
You didn't say past mayor.
That's right. You don't say past mayor. That means a bad thing.
Mayor Wright, ladies and gentlemen of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crowe, thank you for a few minutes of your time this evening. This is the first time I've had the opportunity to be back in these chambers in two decades, and it doesn't seem like 20 years passed that fast. But I'll tell you what, when you get back and see so many familiar faces, it does make it seem a lot shorter. And to our young people who are visiting tonight, I'll share one quick story. I always had the scouts coming in, working on their civic merit badge, and they had to come to a council meeting. And I asked one of them after a council meeting, did you enjoy it? Was it educational? He said, "Mayor, I'd rather be doing my homework." I think I missed it on that. Mayor Wright, Susan and I are delighted to be back home. And several weeks ago, a number of weeks ago, we came back to visit her mom. And got up the next morning, read the Hickory data record, and there on the front page was two articles challenging two of our members of council, Mrs. Patton and Mrs. Fox, on some impropriety, which turned out to be absolutely false. In the article on Mrs. Fox, after they decided to back off of it, there was just a casual note mentioning some of the activities that she had been involved in. Well, let me tell you something about Mrs. Fox. 20 years of service to anything is unbelievable. 20 years of service without an absenteeism is even more phenomenal. And I had the opportunity with my wife Susan to run into Sally downtown and share with her some of my feelings that we served together, but one thing I was told as I was elected mayor is that this. The first order of business of any mayor is that he or she should be building consensus among their council that they can agree to disagree in a same civilized manner. And I never forgot that. That came from some very wise people who had served our city for a number of years. And I want you to know, Mrs. Fox and I, over 20 years, did not rely on everything that she brought to the table. And I would say, oh, Lord, that is not going to work. And, but she was very committed, and she did her homework before she brought something to our council. And I want you to know, when you go back and reflect, and I think the citizens of our city, Sally, needs to know the many wonderful things that you did bring to our council table that were adopted, that made this a better place to live. And I want to personally thank you. As I said, you and I never did agree, always did disagree, but we did in a civilized manner. But I wanted to thank you, but I hope the news media will pick up on the fact that 20 years of service is significant. It is significant. And to add to that, you know, no absenteeism for any meeting. I don't know another member of this council that can say that, or any member previously who can say that, we never missed a meeting. I know I did. Sally, publicly, thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I hope from the citizens of the city, I hope we get good public relations coverage on the many contributions you did bring to the table. And what a wonderful town this is because of people like you who are committed, committed to the betterment of our community. And I just wanted to publicly thank you for what you and I talked about privately. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm very proud of Bill and Susan to come back to Hickory, and I'm pleased that our council has appointed each of them to a key committee of our citizens. And we're going to take advantage of, between the two of them, about seven or eight decades of service to Hickory, and we're going to use you one more time, maybe more than that. Thank you all very much. Mr. Cliffman, you must speak.
Mr. Mayor, this is a member of the council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crowe. I am Cliffman, 2925 Eighth Street, Court, Northeast. In fact, past several years, I have approached city council at the request of the Human Rights Coalition of North Carolina, who most of the members I don't know very well, but there's a particular person who writes me every year and asks if I would come forward to the council and some other governmental agencies for this purpose to request that a proclamation be issued by council to commemorate Bill Rights Day on December 15th. Mayor Wright, you, the council, have been graciously gracious to do that proclamation every year for the last few years, and it's greatly appreciated. This year, in addition to asking you to issue the proclamation for Bill Rights Day, I would also like to encourage you and request that you issue a proclamation honoring Human Rights Week, December 10th through 16th. Last year, the governor and the mayors of Asheville, Black Mountain, Cary, Charlotte, Durham, Forest City, Garner, Greensboro, Hillsborough, Knightdale, Lewisburg, Marion, Raleigh, and Reedsville, Selma, and Zedlin also did so. The Universal Human, and I have a copy of that, and I'm going to try to pass that down. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights was adopted by the United Nations General Assembly and supported there by the United States on December 10th, 1948. The declaration arose directly from the experience of World War II and represents the first global expression of rights to which all people are inherently entitled. The declaration of 30 articles which are stated on the page which I provided you tonight is there in front of you. And so I would request that. Finally, and I did not know that our illustrious mayor, former mayor, McDonnell was going to speak tonight, but I would also like to respectfully request that, if appropriate, this year's proclamation for Bill Rights Day be issued in honor of retired councilwoman Sally Fox in recognition of her years of active civic involvement and faithful service to our community, and especially for her many contributions to the betterment of Hickory as a qualified representative on city council. I would appreciate your consideration of this request. Thank you very much.
Any other people who want to be heard? I would ask for approval of a minute with the committee. Motion by Mr. Diaz, second, by Mrs. Patton. All the party please say aye. All the president, that she knows, Mr. May, representative. Motion by Rick Arm, the head of Congress, please. Motion by Ann, second, by Fox, long-term president, say aye. All the ways known, that she knows. Any thing to leave, Mr. Senator?
Mr. Murray, I ask, rule of I.
All the party please say aye. All the ways known, that she knows. Hi, David Burg.
And Mr. Murray, I believe it is a memorandum of understanding between the city of Hickory and Piedmont Bus transit system and the convenience of a bus, actually, a bus station, a train station that the council or that the city constructed with federal funds several years ago. It's a technical move that the city needs to make, actually, transfer the property to the authority. However, we prepared that document, so we notified earlier today that they want some additional language in the document, so I asked you to simply move it from the agenda this evening. We'll adjust it as the federal, the ZTA has requested it to, and we'll bring it back to you at your next meeting.
They moved it pretty fast.
Yeah, probably with the city agenda and less I.
All the party please say aye. All the other say? Hey, okay, that guy we don't hold on for very long. Okay, you go, Mr. Murray.
First item of this is a public hearing we'll ask. Paul Cal, the personal planner from our planning department, to present a voluntary continuous annexation of 1579 Star Town Road, prior council opening of public area.
Mr. Murray, I'm Mr. Crowe. That, before we tonight, is a, if I can, voluntary to be annexed by the Harvard University College, probably at 1879 Star Town Road. So, the city's property again, probably at 1879 Star Town Road, truck, a tenement, and a property immediately adjacent to the existing proper boundary of the city of Hickory. The new re-accession is council policies to obtain super sharks to support a new carpet business to strengthen this property. The existing land use of property is readily done with a house that's been since taken down, gray is gone on site. There's been a lot of sites, you can see the works gone on, potential site. End use is commercial. It's our new Crispie Grant facility, so, actually, Cal, it's a new bit of that one there. And plenty of all, fairly, everything's been approved, and they're in the initial stages of construction at this point in time. With respect to the existing city boundary, this map is a version that depicts a territorial jurisdiction area, E.T.J., shown in yellow color, and our city limits, shown in blue colors. You can see the subject property is outlined in red, and will be immediately adjusted to the city of Hickory, city limits. This is Star Town Road, and Hunter Street Drive Southeast, which is the, thanks, cut through from Star Town Road to the Catawba Boulevard. With respect to the zoning areas, you can see all the property that is both located in our PDA, as well as city limits. It's a large area of commercial development in this area between Catawba Boulevard and US 72 corridor. The blue property in this area will show Catawba University College. Very margin, the yellow here, so getting into some residential areas, plus the South and Frost. With respect to what's going on around the property for land use, concerns, there's some scattered existing residences in this area. Small malls in the office buildings, blue apartments shows an antitrust credit, and another bit, I'll probably have, I can't, anyone this time. Convenient store, city sunroof appliance, small car wash, beginning Community College. And this is a conceptual site plan facility that was fully laid out. You can see what happened, basic drive, National 21st, and another in this area, coming off of Star Town Road. That's in, in a nutshell, what the development looked like. With respect to this satisfying, satisfying, that the petitions without access to each of the footfalls state statutes require for annexation. I have a public social available to service site, just to please fire, water, sewer, any other service to the city providing property for the city. And staff closes, I think, staff does recommend approval of the policy of annexation. And I will close and answer any questions you may ask.
Are they going to maintain their current location also?
No, sir. This is a replacement of the existing facility, the Star at Southern, in the old old part.
We're going to have a public hearing, and in the public hearing, we'll contact the people who would like to speak against the proposal, to speak, and then be able to afford the proposal. These sides, just 15 minutes, and then we'll get five minutes for rebuttal and sort of rebuttal. With that, I've heard the public hearing over, and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal. Does the realtor want to speak for Mr. Poe? If there is no one desiring to speak, I'd throw the public hearing closed, and ask for motion or discussion.
Motion to the street, sir.
Motion by Mr. Diaz, second, by Mr. Sreber. All the party say aye. All the votes know, that she knows.
Next item of this is a probable report, and I'll follow in the city's community development manager, Mr. David, who's in the path of city council. It is an offer that the city has received to purchase three residential lots that were left over from previous long range transportation plans that the city has.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Crowe. Tonight, I'm here to, like Mr. Berry said, to do that offer to purchase three lots that the city owns in the Barker Hills subdivision down in Mountview area, off of Zion Church Road. I'll also be providing a little some background that, for some of you that weren't on council, but this was an original purchase, to give a little background on how the city came to own these lots. There were eight lots originally purchased in 2004 from the original developer because the plant, the lots were platted in the planned route of Fort Roosevelt, then the route of the southern quarter. The lots were originally purchased for about $32,000 each. That was the developer at that time, his asking price, so we just basically, I believe, purchased them for what he was asking. The route of the thoroughfare has since been relocated to the south in a way from these lots. So now we own these lots that there's no need to reserve them as right-of-way for the road. This slide gives a little bit of an overview of the proposed realignment. And the realignment, this was the original plan for the road to the north here, and these are the lots in question, the bottom four on these two cul-de-sacs, were the lots that the city purchased because the roads ran through them. They've since approved the transportation plan to realign the road to the south. This is the intersection of River Road and Zion Church Road, and then basically take it down to the southwest and connect with Battle Church Road, which then will join back up with Highway 127 in that area. This, the proposed alignment also is a good bit shorter, uses more existing roadway, so if the, when, when the road is ever constructed, it should be a little bit less expensive than going through all of that area there where it's completely undeveloped and no roadways. The remainder of the vacant lots in the subdivision went into foreclosure in 2010. And I'll go back, and you can kind of see a few of them here on White Yard Court especially. Those lots were sold for $13,000 per lot out of foreclosure in 2011 to various property owners, some of which have been built on, some of which their owners are still waiting to, you know, to build in the future. Two city lots were sold, the last one, I believe, was about five years ago, was the most recent of those lots that we sold. We still own six lots in this subdivision. There are four on Red Light Court, two on Wagery Court, I believe. Now, we get to the offer to purchase. Two gentlemen, Mr. Jerry Vasu and Mr. Tron Vasu, had presented staff with three offers to purchase three different lots, 1742, 1743, and 1746, Red Light Court. They were, they're offering us $15,000 per lot for $45,000 for all three. They plan to build single-family homes on. These are all zoned, although they are two residential, so, single-family homes are basically the only thing that you can build there. These properties will be sold through the offset bid process if council wishes to adopt a resolution to accept the offer. The way that the offset bid process works is that council will accept the offer and then advise staff to advertise for offset bids. We post the notice in the newspaper that we would be accepting offset bids for 10 days. Then, on the morning of the 11th day, we would open the bids in the clerk's office, and if there are any received, at that point, the highest bid would then become the bid for the property, and then we would advertise for offset bids again at that point. That process would continue until there was a 10-day period in which no offset bids were received. In order for an offset bid to be valid, it needs to increase the offer by 10% of the first thousand and 5% of the remainder of the offer. For, as a point of reference, for one lot, $15,000, it would need to be $15,800 to be a valid offer for an offset bid. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What are the size of those lots?
What are the size of those lots?
They are .4 acres roughly, around four tenths of acre. They're, the geometry is a little bit different on each of them, but they're roughly in that size. You can build basically one single-family house on all of them.
Any questions, this one? Motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seaver. All in favor, please say aye. All voters know, that she knows.
Next, a common report, the last city council considered a second reading, and I have an item that you just approved under consent, and I'm not bothering to teach. I have a agency of lease agreement between the city of Hickory and the state of North Carolina Forestry Service for lease of a hanger identified as standard W2 on the west ramp of Hickory Regional Airport. Council actually approved on September 3rd, 2003 this agreement. However, as we sent the executed agreement to the state of North Carolina, their legal council wanted to make a couple of tweaks to the memorandum of lease related to date, nothing substantive. Lease itself is for $77,000 a year, increasing to $2,000 a year each year after that for a 10-year period of time. We were requesting a second reading because we'd like the forestry service to move in that rent ASAP, began paying the city rent for the hanger, and taking action on tonight with paying the city about $32,000 in rent for the remainder of this month. So we'd ask you to consider a second reading tonight.
And I think we've got three, first a second reading, and one being in a year. Well, that might have been a key one, I guess. But each side, we seem to have the reason, this time $32,000, seem to have approved the reason. So I would like for motion that we accept this second reading, approve.
Second.
Motion by Wright, second by Jeff, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All voters know, that she knows. Mr. Berry, do you have any nominations? Mr. Berry, you have all in favor, the agenda?
Yes, sir. If there's no nominations on that, it's not on the agenda, I would ask council to consider allowing me to discuss a matter which is related to FEMA requirements, public assistance application that we have submitted for funding from the federal state government relative to the flood damage the city incurred from the flood on July 27th. I'll consider that to be added to the agenda.
This move we add, discussion finger on.
Motion by Leo, second by Fox, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All voters know, that she knows.
Thank you. Of course, we're often late with the flood that took place on 27th, and some of the damage that is, was sustained by public infrastructure and also the debris removal, et cetera. Initially, as the city prepared our request for funding, it was being bundled up with the other jurisdictions, with Catalina County as well, we did not receive the appropriate public assistance approval, we had hoped from FEMA, we had the opportunity to revisit that, we had done that, and we're excited to learn last week that we have been excited. So now we start paperwork process of ensuring, ensuring that the city is reimbursed and receives funding. We're estimating our damages to be just over $2.8 million. So the great news is that 75% of that will be paid for by FEMA, and 25% of that by the state of North Carolina. The item for you this evening is a document that simply has to be approved for FEMA requirements by city council and designates the point person for the city of Hickory as a contact with FEMA as the repairs and the infrastructure are actually made, and we request reimbursement, and that point person will be the city's chief engineer and public services director, Mr. Chuck Hanson. So it's simply a matter of business that we would ask you to approve this evening so that we can meet with FEMA and begin all of that process and not have that delayed. We're glad to answer any questions you may have.
I'm looking to move that we accept the document and approve Mr. Hanson, and his name.
Second. Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mr. PS, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All voters know, that motion is carried. Need a second reading on that?
Just remember, I was gonna read it.
So are we down to general audience?
Actually, Ms. Seaver just pointed out to me, she knew how the nomination for youth council, sorry, could you hold stuff?
I move approval of permanent public unemployment for youth, youth council, Hickory Career Arts, mad as represented.
Second. Motion by Leo, second by him, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All voters know, that motion is carried. More time to speak, speak from the chat, please, to be in here. And, does anybody else have anything to come?
I just would like to comment on what the grand parade was running down in Hickory. It was very expanded this year, and they had all sorts of small cars, miniature trucks. Did a great job, and I, I thought that Hickory rose to the occasion, we had a good turnout. I mean, that's important for a long history.
That's good, how did I do, if I'm having a good one?
Good family, yeah.
Sure, we got a lot going on, sadly, we had the little ride, big Carson Newman, that one. Yeah, that one's good. For all of this, Mrs. Patton, not a lot of hate.
Not Mrs. Fox.
This is second, this is second. I'm not gonna say anymore, I bet. Thank you all for being here, we want to motion to a chair.
Thank you.
First by second, 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 all in favor, say aye.